Welcome to the October 16th, regular Town of LaPelle council meeting. First off, what do you leave us?
To the United States of America, two republics with the same hands, one nation, under God, and deliverable with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Gary Shuck.
Present.
Lindsey Washmuth.
Here.
Roger Faust.
Here.
Chad Blake.
Here.
All right, we will open the floor up to public comments and concerns. We're going to limit these to five minutes. We have a pretty full house, so please come to the podium if anyone has anything to say.
Hello, my name is Breonna Davis and I live in LaPelle.
Hold the gel turned green.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm here to read from the paper so that way I don't use more time when needed. My name is Breonna Davis and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of myself, my children, and the residents of LaPelle who continue to experience discolor concerning tap water. On October 2nd, the town released a statement claiming the discoloration was caused by iron and manganese. However, when I submitted a record, a public records request asking for those test results, the town's attorney responded that no records currently exist for manganese testing. So my question is, how can we publicly say manganese is the cause of if there are no tests that have confirmed it? That same response included monthly reports of operation, MROs, for January through August of 2025, but none for September. Even though my request clearly asked for the entire year, I submitted a separate request for September's records and I still haven't received them. The lack of documentation and transparency only adds to the community concern. I also have elevated TPHMs, which are cancer-causing chemicals in my water. These are disinfection byproducts that form when chlorine reacts with organic matter. And over time, they can pose health risks. So when residents see brown or yellow water, it's not just a visual problem, it is a public red flag. Health red flag. And even, what's even more confusing is the mixed messaging. We're cautioned to wash our clothes in it, but not our children. Even our own health department said that they wouldn't drink it until it ran clear. If the people who are supposed to protect our public health wouldn't drink it, how are we supposed to feel safe giving it to our children? We deserve to know what's in our water and what steps are being taken to address it. The town's communication must match the data, not speculation, not assumptions. I'm asking the council to take three steps tonight, or like for the future. One is publicly share all testing data, including for manganese, TPA gems, and other potential contaminants with plain language explanations for the residents. The second thing I would like to ask you to do is to invite IEDOM and EPA to assist with a full independent assessment of LaPelle's system and treatment process. Alexandria was successful with this. I think it helped the residents understand a lot of what was going on because IEDOM came and explained it to the residents and what they had found. Number three is provide temporary relief. So it says organizing a bottled water drive or donation program, starting with our schools. I don't think that the children at the school getting clean water should be up for debate. At least until the water runs clear and contestants' testing shows that it's safe. We want to trust our own, our town leadership, but that trust must be earned through openness and tangible action. We all want the same thing, clean, safe water for our families and our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Katherine Callahan, LaPelle. I'm an nurse practitioner, most of you know, and own the medical practice here in LaPelle. I want to be very clear with everybody on this council. The house in question that Breonna Davis is in is my home. The comments that continue to be made about that home are my home. You will not be battling, Breonna Davis, you will be battling me. And we've been there before. That house was completely gutted and everything new was put in there. This council said that they were going to bring out, you know, attachments and put it on these houses. And suddenly it ran out of money. But you know what the funny part is? The very first person who put in for that, you already ran out of money. So I would like to know how you're going to tell me all the houses in this community that were addressed with those attachments and how they were fixed. So at this point, we just need to be transparent. We all know there's a water problem. There's no, there's no reason to hide it. We just need to address it and get through it. I've got plenty of cancers over there that I can prove are environmental. I've got plenty of GI problems that I can prove over there are environmental. But we're not doing anybody any good by pointing the finger. It doesn't matter, let's just get it resolved. This isn't your fault, it's not their fault, it's our fault. Because decades of this have taken place. Now we have to fix it, it's the reality of it. How do we do that? We do it together. We, we become transparent, we give records. We let people invest the time that can look into it. You don't have that kind of time. I don't have that kind of time. But there are a lot of people in the community who get behind me and they will pick pieces apart and they will bring me data. That's how I get all the information that's put out there, it's not me. I've got my plate, my plate is overflowing. So at some point, you need to take this water very seriously. Because it's something, it's the most critical point that we need to survive and live. And it's not just here, this is a county-wide problem. We don't have the funds to fix this, so we better get real creative real quick. And I'm telling you, if your family was getting sick because of this, you'd want it addressed and fixed. And she's right, you warned us about the clothes, but what about the children? So, you know, if clothes are that important, children should be that important. This town, this town no longer does a load of whites, does a load of beige. That's a problem. And there's a lot of money people spend on clothes. We've got a whole school system that is a block away from the houses that I own, that we know have a problem. And nobody wants to talk about what's going on over at the school. So you will own this if this goes bigger than what it is unless we just start owning it and addressing it. Nobody's at fault here. So at some point, you gotta get over that and let's just fix the problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna move on.
I'm coming for this.
All right. Yep, screening.
First of all, I just want to thank you specifically for being attentive to our conversations and those of you that do look at us whenever we're speaking and not looking down at your paper or phone or whatever, but actually acknowledging our existence. So with that being said, thank you, Brian. I appreciate you very much in that aspect. Secondly, last month when I was up here, I inquired about perhaps getting something in line for after-hours reporting of the water situation. Where are we with that? Do we have anything?
There is an after-hours numbered call. It should be, is it on the bill?
No, it's when you call into town halls, it'll, it goes to whoever's on call.
Three of them.
Just go through, or just go through.
Okay, because I know last time when Brandon was here, he wanted to try and come up with a solution to where him and Opie weren't getting called out all the time. So I just wondered, what progress are we making? Is there something that we can perhaps alert the community to where they can call, you know, they know steps to take? Because obviously, this is an ongoing thing and we, like stated before, we need to take it serious, not that you're not. But we need to publicize how, the steps that we need to take. Do you have suggestions, solutions, like just starting there, where do we go?
We're working on trying to get, how to get in contact with the utility departments, other than the emergency line.
Okay.
Are your guys' mics on?
Is that better?
Thank you.
We're working on that.
Okay.
Like everything, it's work in progress.
Right.
Nothing happens overnight.
I understand that.
We're all working on that.
Okay.
I know I did look down a few times, I was making some notes.
I, no, I know that, and I, I'm not directing that at you per se, there's just, you know, a couple others that, I know some people are taking notes, but it's been an ongoing issue. And I just wanted to thank you guys for actually looking and paying attention, acknowledging, because that is an important part of communication. Because there are so many people, I've tried and tried and tried to get the word out, for these people to come and attend. And so whenever these people come in after their work is through, just like you guys do, you expect us to hold a quorum while we expect you to acknowledge and actually pay attention and hear us. You know, it's just a respect thing for me.
If, if I may, so the change that has been made to the, the phone system, it used to go to an after-hours call center who then would dispatch it to the person on call. The person on call now has a single cellphone, so if it's Brandon's night or whoever's night it is, when you call in, if you say you have an after-hours emergency and hit the number on the menu, it transfers directly to that phone. So that is, we've taken out the middle man of the call center, I think your battery went dead, but we took out the middle man of the call, the, the call center main is where it goes directly to the person.
Okay.
So whoever's on call that night will at least get the call and be aware. So it's not just Brandon, it's not just Opie, it's whoever's on call will at least be aware if there is a problem.
Okay, so would it be, would it be okay if we even, if I took a piece of paper and wrote with a Sharpie and put it in the post office, "After-hour water problem, call this number"?
All they have to do is call the town hall number.
Okay.
The town hall number, and you will hit a button and it automatically transfers to whoever is on call.
Right, but how are they gonna know?
It's on the menu.
How are they gonna know to call the town hall?
Where else are they gonna, I mean?
I understand what you're saying, but rather than posting on the ever-loving Facebook group, how are they going to know to call town hall? Because that is their go-to right now, and it's not getting you guys the information that you need. So how are they gonna know? How are we gonna get these residents to know, "Call, call, call town hall, don't post on Facebook, call town hall"?
You could do that, you wanna put that in the post office?
I would gladly put that.
That's your job, that's your job.
So in, in the last meeting, Brandon said that there, only he and Opie were qualified to take water samples, that's why he didn't want to call the town hall. Because then he and Opie would have to run out every time there was a call. Has that been resolved, have we now trained the rest of the staff?
They're, they didn't train, yeah. They may have, they may have already been, I don't know, like later stuff they all know. Yeah, do that.
Why not put it on the water bill?
Could the town just send a letter out to residents?
To send letters out to residents costs me almost a thousand dollars every time I do it. I'm more than welcome to do it, but I don't want to offend anybody by spending that kind of money.
I spend more than a thousand dollars in bottled water a month, so I think it would be worth it if people knew that that was where they need to go to call for the water.
They needed to call town hall?
Yeah, some people don't.
Put it on the utility bill.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be the easiest way is to put it, but you have to read your utility.
I just don't feel like the residents should have to be doing those things.
I'm sorry, I don't, so.
Put a sign up at town hall, on the front door.
I'll put it with the rest of them up there on the front door, too. And if you want me to, I'll just print, I'll make up the signs and I'll take, I'll cut them all over town. I can put them at the gas station, or I'll make them up and you come pick them up.
I can do that.
Okay. I got you.
The last hardest question, I've had about five residents reach out to me, "It's fall, when is leak pickup gonna start"?
I have not heard from the utilities on that.
I haven't either.
It is posted on the very front door of town hall, I would have to go back and look, or maybe.
When I get the signs.
Yeah, it's posted on the door, it's posted on the drive-through, and we bought things to post them so they're not on the bulletin board where you can't go in at any time. They are directly on the very front door, so all you gotta do is walk up there whether we're open or not, and it's posted. I wanna say it's the third Monday of this, it seems like they're gonna try to do it a week before Halloween, or the week of Halloween, or the Monday after Halloween. So don't quote me on which day it is.
Okay.
That's something, we can get that on the left side, Greg.
Thank you.
Glenn Smart, LaPelle. First off, I watched the fellow down here second one in and your man fall asleep on that young lady last week. Very disrespectful. Somebody could get in a butt you. Now, the water issue. When are we gonna call it what it is? Or how long are we, you're gonna let this go on until you start furnishing people some clean water? Bottled water, whatever. I call it a crisis, wouldn't you? I mean, I'm not the only one, and there's sixty, seventy percent of this town right here, though. I'd call it a crisis. And I, I.
We are working on it, go ahead.
I know you are, but I've heard that for ten years, man, you know.
I haven't been on the council.
I know you haven't, but we got a lot of longtime members here. I wouldn't be very proud of my record. But I think sooner or later, we'd have to put out some bottled water. Because people are afraid to drink it. You can't blame them. They're paranoid, they don't know what they're getting.
I'm gonna address some of that when Dan does his presentation. Some of this will be addressed, and what is going on and what is being done.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kristy Orfman. I know this feels like you guys are being attacked and have been attacked, but I gotta tell you, you brought it on yourselves. For several years, for several years, I've been talking to you.
Can you, I don't know how long it'll last, but.
Well, okay, perfect example.
Yeah.
We know that the meetings are on the calendar for the whole year, why, why is this not prepared? Why, why do we have council members showing up who are not prepared? Who can't pay attention to the meeting because they're reading documents? Why do we act like it's inconvenient to spend money to communicate with the town about what's going on with their water? Or what's going on with their town? When we, why, why do we have to ask you to pay attention when we're talking? This is what I'm talking about, guys, when you act like we're the problem, we're an inconvenience. When we put you in those seats and we trusted you to do this work, you bring this on yourselves. You told us, nobody shows up at the meetings, here they are. You said you wanted to hear from them, it wasn't a problem if they're not here, here they are.
I was here a year, a year and a half, a year ago, and you guys told me not to speak unless I was recognized.
And I was here for that, you did.
And then she had to ask if I could talk, and finally Chad called on me after you guys called on everybody else in the audience.
Yeah.
She had to ask if you guys were gonna let me talk.
This, you're gonna.
So I haven't shown up since then.
I told you then, I told you, I told you a couple of years ago, and I know some of these conversations were one-on-one. If you keep shutting the public out and you keep pushing us away because you're the elected representatives and we need to let you do your job, then you can't be frustrated when people feel like they can't communicate with you and when they feel like they have no say in the process, they can't come to you with a problem and be taken seriously.
They have to go to Facebook.
The, the process that you gave us, called, "Go out and test your water", it's useless. It's useless, I did it. You did, you came out and tested my water for iron. In fact, as a matter of fact, you didn't even test my water because you knew it was gonna test high. You said that, "Oh, maybe it'll test, it's gonna test high." That's, that's not the solution. You know, if you don't have damn solution, say it, don't have a solution, then we can move forward. Just giving us platitudes and, and disrespect really isn't gonna get you anywhere. We just need to get it fixed, it's getting worse and worse. And really, how do you think that looks outside of this community? Because people outside of this community now are starting to comment on these videos and how they see you behave up there to the, to the residents when they're talking. It is not a good look, guys, you gotta earn our trust back. You don't want to be attacked and you've gotta earn our trust back. And it starts with transparency and communication. And I would rather spend twelve thousand dollars a year for you to send out an actual newsletter that has actual useful information in it than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a building that we don't really need to spend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I can't really get up, I can't stand very good.
Go ahead.
But I have a question. On the water thing, everybody's talking about bottled water, I think that's a good idea. Why can't you guys go to like Coke over in Anderson and tell them the problem you have, see if they'll give you a discounted rate, or even donate it to the community? Or maybe Pepsi or one of those companies like that. You know, be innovative a little bit here and try to figure out some things till we get a problem solved.
I'm more than willing to help with outreach.
I've already started outreach.
Yeah.
I've already talked to Tractor Supply in Noblesville, they said they would donate a skid of water. I mean, we have, how many people here at EMB that order water by the truck, semi-truck loads? I mean, we, we have too many connections that, you know, maybe we could talk to EMB about donating water for our town and that could be, of course, a write-off for them, or other, other companies within the town that could donate water. I've reached out, Tractor Supply said they'll help, Meyer said they can help a little bit, they're not. They're not willing to like throw a whole skid out there. I have not reached out to Walmart. I've also talked to a couple other business owners that are adjacent to the town, and they said that they would be willing to help out if they could have some information such as ways to write it off and things. So again, I'll help, but I can't do it all. So, not that I need, but you know what I'm saying, I just, I, I can't call every company one because I don't know all the companies in the town. As far as I'm concerned, we should be calling Brockway because, I mean, they like water, so let's, let's donate some water to the town that you're in.
Good idea.
I'm here to help.
They have a new manager, let me get him to do it.
There you go.
I do have one more comment, Heather Callahan. On Monday, is this name Brandon, is that your water person? He came out to, he came out to collect water from the 316 house. And I just want to let everybody know, when he collected that water, he did not clean the spigot when he collected it. He did not have gloves on when he collected it. I'm not so sure you've got the qualified person who's doing the water. And I know for a fact that will be a big battle in the end on whether or not those tests are valid because he did not take those proper steps. And I know that, because as most of everybody in this room knows how involved I am in the county and up north in Alexandria of all these procedures for the water. This is a problem, and we will share those, those pictures tonight on social media of your person that you employ, who, from my understanding and what I've been watching, has not been able to pass his exam, which is fine. At some point, you guys have got to make a rule that says if you don't pass after so many times, we gotta put somebody else in that position. It's the same thing with nursing. If you're in nursing, you get like three chances to take those boards, and you gotta go to remediation, and you gotta sit out for many days. It's just the reality of it. Everybody has a tough time, there's nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying, no gloves, didn't wipe it off, how about our next question?
I apologize, guys, I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
Hi, Dave. I'm kinda wondering if there was like a...
How would we get a report? Thank you.
I'm kinda wondering, you guys, if there's a well issue? Is the Ford Street well going dry? Or like typically when you have brown water, you're getting sediment. Like if you shut your water off at your house and you turn it back on, you're gonna get brown water until it gets flushed out. It's flushing out lines, kinda makes sense, but at the same time...
Glenn, Glenn?
I'll see you later, what else? I know, so have.
It's laying pretty good.
I'm over the map.
Do they got water?
We should be sending that refrigerator.
I gotta go with the sink, Bill.
Okay, well, the room, we'll take care of it, we got some time.
Oh, we're good.
I'm on the air, I said.
Want some water?
It's hot.
So I just turned it off.
Go ahead, sir.
So are we pulling from two wellheads, one on Fourth Street, the one way off thirteenth? So are we switching back and forth from the two? Is that one going dry all the time? Do we got to pull from that one?
We're in the process of cleaning them.
Right?
Fourth Street has just been cleaned. We're waiting for, I haven't got confirmation yet, a clean back keys.
Right.
So we can put it back in service.
Oh, we're probably burning through water, obviously. If it keeps going dry, then we got to switch over to the other line?
It's not going dry.
It's getting low, then we switch it?
No. We switch between the two.
Yeah.
To keep both of them active.
Okay. So then, the other thing is, is it more flow at night from Brockway than maybe causing some of our sediment issues that are just so much brown water?
We feel like some of the issues are Brockway pulling so much water. We have had conversations with Brockway and why they are pulling so much water.
Right. Do we gauge any of that at all? I'm sure we do, just the outgoing to them, but...
Yes. We are in the process of putting on a water meter that we have real-time data of when they are pulling water.
And the other thing is, so if they're pulling all that water, is there any limit we can do that or no? We always, you just have to constantly feed them as much as they want?
We're, I was heard the town manager on this one because she has gotten a lot of information on this one. There is things that we can do to limit their usage.
Okay. So then, I don't know, just one point, one, I would kind of be like, eh, they changed out their glass, they're not using brown glass, I heard over there. Maybe they're using more water? Just a guess. It's been getting worse and worse. There's more people.
It's the last...
The drought's not helping either. Let's go.
The last three months, they've used a lot more water than normal.
They've used, I gave them a microphone. They've used probably three times as much as what they normally use in the, in the last three weeks. I've actually been working with, I've been working with the guy who handles the money side of it, so that they're trying to figure out how many thousand gallons they're using a day. So we're giving them reports. We're going out once a day right now and finding out how much they used from the day before to today or whatever. So yeah, we are tracking them. And like Brian said, we ordered a new meter and it'll actually go right to our computers and they can actually monitor their own water at the same time too, so.
So then the next thing is, do they need to pull clean water through their, what they're doing, or do they just need water?
They have a well of their own as well.
So they're just pulling as much as they can?
I'm sure they're using it for something because it's costing them a lot of money. We had a meeting with them, uh, two weeks ago, two weeks ago to address those problems. Uh, they were very receptive to what we were talking about and they are working on, uh, taking care of getting rid of their excess water. And we talked about those very things that you just brought up. And they have done some major changes and their water usage has been dropping as we speak. They're not using as much now as they were. So we're working on that. Like Brian said, there's going to be some meters put in and checking on that.
Yep. I told the question again.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I just wanted to add to the record that he's like asking me about discoloration with possibilities. Is I like told this to Brandon when he was out at my house the other day and I also wanted to bring this up was on the thirteenth, my water was discolored. And when I called town hall, they told me it was because they were working on the water tower, but you guys didn't put a public notice out until the fourteenth. Um, so like then again, there's like another gap in communication from you guys. Um, I just really think that like you guys should work on that some. And then that way we would be aware and that way you guys aren't overwhelmed with calls when there is work going on to let me know. That's why. Um, my water is yellow almost twenty-four seven. I have to keep a clear glass next to my faucet to compare it. Um, I D M has finally agreed to come back out to my house on sometime this week, um, to do a follow-up. I wanted to mention that when I spoke with Erin Brockovich, she was really concerned with the amount of discoloration all across Madison County. In Harts Scrabble, which is off of thirteen, which is where one of our wells sit, they have hexavalent chromium present in their drinking water. They are a different drinking water system than us. That's South Madison Utilities. Um, Anderson also has hexametallic chromium in their water. This is not something that has an enforceable limit. So if it was in our water, you guys aren't legally bound to do anything unless it's like so high. Um, but Brockway was put on as a super fund site because they contaminated the groundwater with chromium, arsenic and lead. Um, they're no longer an active super fund site, but they're overseen by the state. They have employees on Facebook that talk about they believe that they're grandfathered into pollution and now that they're doing upgrades, that is no longer true. I have taken a look at like how much they discharge and their organic matter that is being discharged. I was told by I D M that it does not go back to our water system, but if there was an infiltration of some sort, that organic matter would make sense as to why I have high byproducts from the chlorine because it's a byproduct of organic matter coming into contact with the chlorine when you guys are treating it. I don't know if that's the reason. Again, that's why I think that having the EPA and I D M come out here and having you guys backing us as the residents, asking them to come out here and do an assessment. I think that would push them, especially since Owens Brockway is already, has already been deemed a super fund site in the past. I think that we wouldn't have much pushback from the EPA. I've already worked with them successfully in Anderson and gotten them to come to Anderson for their active super fund site. Um, it's not to put anyone out of business and not like, I don't have anything against Brockway. I moved here a year and a half ago. I don't know anything about it. I just, they can keep their employees safe while we are like protecting our resources as well. Like we don't get more of our water. We don't get a new offer when ours is contaminated. There are things that we can do to like preserve our resources and take action now, like, and, and just so we are also aware as a community as like what's in our water. So the P T H Ns is what's causing mine to be discolored. It says that. I have a chemical that causes it to be four percent yellow. It is high, but it is still within legal limits. I D M says it shouldn't be discolored all the time. I'm asking what I should do because my, my water is legal, but it's discolored every day. And I'm told that I can drink it. I can bathe my kids in it. I don't need to boil it. You know what I mean? Like some of these contaminants are, they are more concentrated once you boil your water. So I don't even have that often. I have to buy a bottle of water. I have to get a filter for my bath for my kids. Like I don't, I rent, so like I have to have like find options for what kind of system I could put in my house for the filtration. It's just like so much that we are left to do on our own if you guys aren't here to help us. And I think that there's been enough coverage now for you guys to like work alongside us with, I've been, I've done a lot of research. So like P T H Ns, hexavalent chromium, again, you guys aren't required to test for that, but that would be like some, somewhere I would start. Erin Brockovich said that that could be, if it's super high and like presently here, it can cause a yellow discoloration. Five dollars. You have to go through like a public service to get a hexavalent chromium test. Brandon said something about mentioning it to the utilities. He seemed receptive of it. Like I will say, he took a sample from inside my house this time and last time he did not, um, because he said it was clear at the tap and I showed him a bottle inside that was not clear. Um, so this time he did take it. I mean, yes, he did not have gloves on and the only reason why I bring that up is because if I would have done that with my state testing, they would have called it invalid. Eight hundred dollar testing invalid just because I didn't have gloves or because I didn't wipe it off right. I mean, there's, I watched him do the pool. It was not done correctly. And it's not anything against him. I just, there are aspects that we could be taking better, so.
And that's a Brandon water heater, everything in that house. Everything is nifty.
I'll make it clear, Brandon is not our water operator.
Neil McKee is.
We have a company.
Mine told me Neil McKee was our water operator on record, so.
So who is it?
It's you, Matt. It's Neil and Troy. I don't know that.
So Neil McKee from the city?
Nope.
So who is it?
It's Troy Elias from U Mac.
I D M told me today it was Neil McKee and he has to make daily visits to the plant. So again, there's more communication.
Well, okay, Neil is under Troy, yes. Neil is under Troy. Troy's the owner. No, no, whatever. Yes.
So Neil, it is Neil?
He's, yes, he comes out every day, but Troy is the main guy that we deal with.
And what's Troy's last name?
Elias.
How do you spell that?
E L L E S. E A S.
I. I L L.
Well, based on the information that he gave me when he came out and tested my water for lead, it was E L L E A S.
Okay.
From U Mac.
I'm gonna go with what you said.
That I'm still waiting on the results for. He tested my water for lead in February and I still haven't received the results from U Mac. I've received the results from the county from whenever Teresa called me and asked me to receive that and my lead levels are off the charts. And my husband is now exhibiting neurological symptoms.
You guys see how much effort and time and research these people have done. They're not just to stir trouble.
And honestly, the only reason I haven't brought it up before now is because I've, I've, I've been chasing my tail.
I wish you would have just said something.
No, I know. And it's not, I haven't reached out to Teresa, but I reached out to the state or the county health department because it was under my understanding that y'all sent the water samples to the county. And the county is not acknowledging my records request. So then to this week, I reached out to I D M because I wanted to try and get the level example or the level samples from U Mac. Because it's my understanding that U Mac is also supposed to, um, also supposed to report to the I D M if there's a problem. So I mean, I'm not placing blame here because I've dropped the ball on my end as far as getting stuff done as well, because let's admit it, life is lifing for all of us. But at this point, like I'm getting more and more concerned because whenever my husband walks in the door and he's shaking uncontrollably and now we have lead levels off the charts. And, and I have had this opportunity to do more research in the last three months than I have in the last year. Plus we have the tornado thing, you know? I mean, so I've been dealing with that as well. So I'm not placing blame, but I'm just saying there is multiple levels of things here. And I'm not saying you're not trying. I'm not saying that none of that, but like it's been pointed out, we can work together and I appreciate, I, personally, I see the change already since you've taken the seat. Because you seem to be working things and you seem to be getting more things done and at least you acknowledge us and let us speak. Where before we were muted.
I'm just surprised nobody on this council has checked their water. I'm surprised you haven't done that.
Haven't checked water?
Your water. How you, you haven't sent it in. I'm surprised.
I have. It's fine.
And so are you willing to share those results with all of us?
The lead was a little high. That was it.
But can we see all the results?
Well, I just did the same test we sent out for the thing. I'll call Troy tomorrow and find out why that test didn't come back.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I just want it clear. I'm not pointing the finger here. I just want to work on a solution. Because it's not just me and it's not just lead. It's, it seems to be multiple levels. And like I've stated before, I'm proactive. I'll help where I can help. But I, I'm not claiming to be a hydrologist. I'm not, I'm, in fact, I'm quite ignorant when it comes to this and I'll be the first to admit it. But I'm here to help. And I feel like if the, if you guys would just communicate, like I said last month, what's going on, what we're doing to fix the problem and, and just, just, I feel like allowing us to talk is a, is a way to help open the, the, the lack of communication or the preconceived notion that people are not welcome to speak. So I, for that, I'm, I'm grateful. Just maybe send out a flyer. I'll send out Sharpie letters, however I can help.
All right. Stephanie Eble, I'll be very brief, uh, which is I know hard for me to do, but, um, I do want to say thank you very much because even just, I, I've only been to like, I think, three meetings. Maybe this is the fourth all year and I do think we are making progress and I'm ecstatic about that. Um, obviously you all live here and deal with all of what everybody here is dealing with, um, in different fashions and different ways. So I'm just excited to see that I feel like we're starting to bridge or come together or try to come together because we're all seeking the solution, right? We're all seeking what is the cause and what is the effect? I'm still trying to figure out though, because it doesn't happen every single day. It, it's not always yellow. It's not always brown. Um, I, I'm still trying to figure out what is the cause and then the effect, right? And so I feel like we are a very smart group here. I mean, you hear and see there's a lot of intelligence right here in this room. And yet I feel like it is still beyond our capabilities, right? It's beyond our scope, our skill, our knowledge, our, our set of, of understanding. So I want to really powerfully request that we find someone outside of here and here.
That there's our engineer.
Whoever it is. Well, I mean, but an engineer, I'm talking a, a water, hydrologist, like there, there's gotta be something with, because it's such a bigger thing that's going on here. So the pipe, the pipes are still concerned. Obviously we, we had the, the, whatever the funds that ran out and so we still have like one third that's fixed, but two thirds are not. So even if we have clean water and we get the tower cleaned, that clean water then might come down and then it's still going through dirty pipes. So piping is still an issue. The, um, I, I'm concerned about cause and effect. So the other question is, how are we determining what is happening as far as a trend? Cause there's gotta be a trend. Is it, I, I believe, I don't even know who works at Brockway or doesn't, but there's gotta be some type of cause and effect because it seems like when Brockway is using a lot of water, then there seems to be maybe some other problems. So more in general, in the town.
We're gonna talk about that during Dan's presentation.
Okay. Well, so then the question is, all that water is going somewhere. Where is it coming back to or where is it dumping to? Or is it, is there a possibility of it coming back? Somebody talked about a backflow. I don't even know. They were like, well, surely they checked that. And I was like, I don't even know what you're talking about. So that's what I'm saying. Like there's things that lots of people are questioning and trying to understand. And I think we just need to go outside of ourselves and find some specialists that really can look into the root of what's the cause. Because if lots of water is going that way, but some is coming back this way and getting into our system in some way, shape or form. And I know that many people here have tested. I've not tested my water, but again, I have three different things that are, um, we, we have a water softener. Five years ago, we took the water softener in and they reversed osmosis. That was five years ago. And then in the last sixty days, we put a whole house. So we have three different lines of defense. So my water doesn't usually look any different, but I don't know, I've not tested it. So I don't know what I can't see, what might be a, a contaminant or a concern.
Just because water is clear or...
Right. That's what I'm saying. And, um, someone came and found me on the street about two months ago and told me that he had, um, checked and he gave me four things. And I didn't even know what the names of them were. I literally put those four things into chat G P T and I said, can you tell me what these have in common or what, what would cause these or what would be? And one of the, the four different things from chat G P T was industrial contamination. And so I'm just putting that on record because I do believe we need to really look at what is happening over there and what cause might be having an effect on this entire community. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say, if you spent four hundred and fifty dollars to renovate your guys' building and you don't invest in this water and testing it, you're gonna have an uproar in this town, or in this town.
Since Dan's here, can I ask a sort of layman technical question?
Can anybody give this presentation?
Oh, yeah. Are we gonna get technical questions?
Yeah, he has quite a bit of information for us tonight.
Yes, sir.
If it is Brockway and we know they're using more water, pardon me.
The only thing we know is Brockway is using more water.
Okay.
I'm not gonna get into the blaming company that we have no proof that they're doing something.
Here's, here's an idea. I'm not trying to say that, but one thing, when you said they were trying to work with us and stuff, and they're using a large volume of water, can they build like another well?
Does it, they're... To have their own well.
I know, but can they build a second well though, to where maybe it's deeper, where they do well water, maybe for what they're using, but then city clean water? And that may eliminate some problem here.
We'll have to go through the county in order to drill a well.
Okay.
That's correct, but all options are on the table. Let's just put it that way. When we talk to them, everything's on the table.
Brockway doesn't like their big water bill as much as we don't like them using all the water.
Right.
So.
Yes. Okay. Anyone else?
I just have one thing to say.
Okay.
And I'll be, I'll be quick. Um, here in Moore, I live over on Central Avenue. And just like Bree, I have three young kids who the water is my main concern. Like those are my children. I'm gonna do whatever I have to do to protect them. Um, they have come home from the school talking about how the water is yellow over there, how their teachers have told them not to drink the water from the water fountain. And it's very concerning when their own teachers are telling them not to drink from there. I have to, just like Bree, go out and buy twenty-four packs of bottled water because I'm not drinking that water. Um, or having my children drink it. I don't know if there's some assistance that we can give to the school, if we can sub, like donate bottled waters. Um, I mean, it, I guess.
The school hasn't acknowledged it. They're unwilling to acknowledge it, so we've got a problem there.
When they were reached out to, they said that the parents would have to go to the school board because it's out of their scope.
Yeah. And that's where you have to go.
To turn the water fountains off so the kids can't access them. And that was after the town bill failed there.
It would help if the council helped you address the school board. What are they cooking with?
Yeah.
The water. Uh-oh.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just would like to add that I D M and like, I know the town has sometimes said stuff about it maybe my pipes. And Catherine clarified that my pipes at my house are new. I don't know if you remember that I had emailed you about the Commonwealth project that we had and I was out here at all the meetings where they said that they were gonna replace both sides. And then their engineers told me that neither side was galvanized and it ended up being the town side is galvanized. So if there is issues at my house and it is because of the pipes, maybe it's because I still have gout lines.
Part of Dan's presentation is getting rid of anything that is not plastic in town on the water reins.
Okay. So how will we ensure that we don't run out of money again? Cause I was one of the first people on that list.
Right.
Well, Brandon, Brandon Hutcherson told me on my...
Just what you told us.
I didn't know you ran out of money. The state, actually, would, would you like to speak on that, please? Thank you, Riley.
That's exactly what you said in the office.
Brandon said it. And then you had told me it was still acceptable per state, so you weren't gonna put me on the list.
Yeah.
So.
Did I told you I was not going to put you on the list?
Yeah, you said that I won't be put on, I said, so I won't be put on the list and you said no. It was still acceptable per state. I, I have the, I could forward it to you again if you would like, so you can read it.
Sure. Please.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I'm Riley Duffy. I work with Commonwealth Engineers. Um, so the lead service line project that came through Towne LePell, it was performed based on grant, available grant money. So the money was used to verify and replace lines based on inspections that were performed in town as well as verified. As you probably saw, Atlas out here, uh, potpourting specific areas.
And how many lines did that include?
Total?
Yes.
Approximately a hundred and fifty pockets.
Okay. So where can we, um, request the information of all those homes that it did, that it, that you addressed?
So.
So technically you did run out of money, correct?
So it was based on available grant money and...
Yeah. So you ran out of money?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just make sure we're clear on how we're answering this.
There was only a certain amount of money this hour went.
Yes.
Okay. But you ran out of money.
What about your engineer saying, sending me an email and saying that neither side is galvanized when the picture was clearly labeled that the town side was galvanized?
So in your, in your case, well, the photo that was provided, where was that photo taken for, in your case, showing that it's galvanized?
In the main, I'm assuming it came from you guys, so.
At the main?
Yeah. And in the hole with, at the main, it showed the pipes out there.
The part that's in your yard?
Yeah.
That's the water meter.
Water meter?
If it's in your yard, the little, about this big round in your yard.
Is it down in the hole or is it the cover?
It's down in the hole. You guys took a picture of it. There, it says that there's an abandoned galvanized line, a gout line on the town side that provides water to me and then my plastic lines on my side. And you guys said that neither side of my service lines were galvanized, but the picture labeled the town side galvanized. So I followed up with the town and they told me that I'm not being put on the list. So I don't know. I don't, should I have been put on the list because my lines were gout or no?
So there's, unfortunately with a lot of these lead service line replacement programs, there's a lot of caveats about what qualifies. So galvanized lines specifically by themselves, unless we verify that there is a lead joint upstream or pretty much at the point of connection, we can't replace it and we can't pay for it. That's one of the huge...
So that's not what you guys said at the, at the town hall that you guys held here that we have in our recording. You guys said you guys were gonna replace both the homeowner's side and the town side if any of them were gout.
I understand. It's specifically, that's the specific requirement that we are held to by the funding program.
Certainly clarified. So do you send out letters clarifying when you guys make an error? I mean, is this, this, clearly we cannot depend on one word, one's word. We, we, I think we've all come to that conclusion to me.
And the worst thing is because you guys stated that, you're making our town officials look very incompetent.
Exactly.
And it's not falling on them. It's falling on you because your company specifically stated, and I asked a million and one questions at that town hall meeting about what was gonna be replaced. You guys are making our town look bad and that's not okay because these guys are up here trying.
Yeah. And we have to see them at the local store.
So now our residents are left, including myself, who had lines inspected. And I know for a damn fact that the freaking couplers on them are galvanized.
And she's got lead issues as well.
And that guy came out and stuck his magnet in the middle of winter and said, oh, it's not galvanized. You can't take a magnet to the side of it. I'm not an idiot. I've worked in construction for a very long time.
She also has lead issues and she's ten houses down from me, so.
The thing that makes me the... The thing that makes me the worst angry thing out of all of this is you're making these guys look like they don't know what they're talking about. So on your behalf of your company, issue a statement saying we messed up. It's not the town's fault. We messed up, Commonwealth messed up.
But the council needs to fire the firm too. So they are responsible.
How about this? You know, since you guys said one thing, then you couldn't follow through because of the grant, and you guys said you could, that your company has like an insurance or something where they pay you for the mistake you guys made by giving misinformation.
Got to be accountability.
Something, some, somewhere.
Wasn't there seventy-nine grand left in that project when you buttoned it up that you said you were gonna use for well maintenance? Can you not go back and use that to replace service lines?
I think I did not recall that.
Oh, I get so tired of the two different.
Oh, the fun thing is.
Same project, two different funds, okay.
That's, that's what I mean. You're never gonna be able to justify renovating that, that building. I'm telling you guys, renovate that building for half a million dollars. This town is gonna be in an uproar.
That sits over a plume, by the way, which is like, looking out for the health of the community, I don't understand why we would wanna move our town hall there. Precautions in place or not. The benzene plume that sits there, and they don't know, like, I mean, it's. It's above, and it's above.
It's from the gas station that used to exist across.
Right, but their documents state that it's still leaking. There's still contamination coming. It's still happening and they don't know why.
And the tanks were removed.
But the tanks were removed, but the contamination is still there, not getting better. They still have to put protections in place for the houses over there. And the, I'm sorry, what would you call it? Like a business, like.
It's like Firestone in Noblesville. They can't use.
Like they have a residential lab, or they have like a business level for businesses, like they have that level too, and exceeds the business level. So I, in the documents, it states that there is something placed on the bank, but it still hasn't been removed. And so I, I understand that you guys aren't doing any construction in the basement, but you guys have to think, like, that stuff doesn't just affect the ground. Like you have to think about how, how does a benzene plume affect the air when you're over there in that top part of town? Should we really be putting our town hall there and spending the four hundred and fifty there? Why not here? Why not somewhere else? You know what I mean? I don't know. I'm, like, again, I haven't been to the meetings in a year because I was told not to talk, so I don't really know what's going on. But I just, there's other things that we can do, and I just don't think, we should be aware of that, like other, it's not just Brockway. There's other USTs in town, there's other spills, there's, the dump was a super fun site. If it wasn't capped off properly and the EPA just checked off their boxes, there could be still something over there leaching into our water source somehow. Again, the EPA, an item coming out working with us, maybe a hydrologist working with them can pinpoint the issue. I just, there's so many things. It's not just Brockway. It's not just old pipes. It's not just miscommunication, but all of that plays a part.
And there are things in Dan's presentation, when we get to that, that will address several parts of that.
Right, Brian?
And before we took possession of the building, that was a concern. And there was, what, two weeks of testing done, sometimes three?
Phase one environmental study was done.
Yes.
So do, do they have?
And it was clean.
Have they given you any work on when they're gonna lift the covenant thing they put on it? It's like an environmental thing on it that.
That's the first thing we checked was that covenant, and it's not.
But it's not lifted yet. It still is pending.
Across the street, it's not listed.
Okay.
Aren't we on the bank? It's not listed.
Aren't we on a deadline to replace these galvanized ones? Do we have, is there a deadline for that?
So twenty twenty-seven, they're not expecting one twenty twenty-seven.
So why would we be looking for the money somehow to replace them, whether there's money left in that project or not?
Cause we're gonna remodel the building.
I have another question, real quick. Go ahead, though.
This, this is gonna be, we've got to move on with the meeting.
Can we have another meeting about the water, a special meeting? Maybe we've asked for a bunch. I know that they have, so can we schedule another one?
We'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But Riley, finish.
So, yes, we're going to lead service line program. There's a deadline for replacing those lines. It is, it's twenty thirty-six. It's like the official timeline of when you officially have to replace everything. So the next two years are confirmation and identification. So those who have received letters, it's an initial inspection pretty much based on either observations from the utility or observations based on home age. Typically, if you have a home built before a specific year, it's just assumed that it's either galvanized or lead, just based on the age of that home. What is required going forward now is actual physical verification, so ongoing verification and then substantial replacement as it's actually physically seen and determined, so.
So what if it's determined wrong, like it was at my house? Like, I don't, they said it was galvanized, they said it wasn't galvanized, but it was.
So.
And then, like you said, I understand that it may need to be near like a lead pass, lead connection, and like she has, so how, could you guys come back out and verify that it's not attached to anything? Cause I mean, if she's having lead issues, I don't understand how that, and you guys replaced, I think they had a map up there that said they replaced the main on John Street somewhere.
Yes. Ms. Davis, if you would let, when we get down to Mr. Cutschall.
He was clarifying the galvanized question that I asked.
But if you would let, let's get on to Mr. Cutschall's presentation. This will answer a bunch of those questions that you have.
Okay.
Thank you. I have to cut you off, but this, this presentation will clarify a lot of what we're talking about. One question.
As far as the replacement that Atlas does with the pipes, is that Commonwealth?
Yes, that is Commonwealth.
Okay, so what is the, what was the manufacturer standard on those pipes laying out in the sun and degrading for as long as they did? Did we check into that?
Those pipes were not used. We switched to a different pipe when we were here, open, open cut.
Okay, awesome.
Those were used in the drilling, when they were boring the lines, and that's the pipe that they used.
Okay.
We had so much problems with that.
Right.
That it, we had to go to an open cut and we used a different pipe. And some of that was because the pipe had laid out in the sun.
Awesome. So did we just, is, is there any sort of a warranty or manufacturer warranty as far as covering the degraded that was used? Or possible degraded that was used?
In part of the updated agreement with Atlas, we have extended warranty on everything that was bored in.
Awesome.
It wasn't because it was laying in the sun. It was just because we had some issues with some breaks where they were joined together.
Okay.
So we asked for more.
Extra coverage?
Yes, extra coverage.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, presentations. Event permit, Christmas in LaPelle. Is anyone here for the Christmas in LaPelle?
There's no one here for the Christmas in LaPelle. They contacted Kelly and the fire department. They, neither one had any problem with it. They said that everything in this permit was the same as the one you guys passed last year.
Okay, you don't have any questions? I'm the council. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Christmas in LaPelle event permit. So moved.
I'll second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Wastewater study, but we have someone here for that.
Good evening. For the record, Liz Crone with ODB Chroming Associates, municipal advisors, and we've presented a rate study, I think in, I forgot, in July. And council's been wrestling with, with this for the wastewater utility. You do have improvements that need to go in there, slip lining. Two or two and a half million dollar project that is pretty imminent, and then ongoing upgrades may or may not be coming soon to the wastewater treatment plant. And so we wanted to provide you with post phase in of rate adjustments so that we can have the funding to cover these preliminary project costs, and then ultimately, those preliminary project cost allowances can be converted to a municipal bond at some point when the project is designed and bid. But again, the current water rates were, your wastewater bill for four thousand gallons is about fifty dollars, and your stormwater bill's about three dollars, three dollars and five cents. Indiana code sets out the rate making formula for municipal utilities, cash operation and maintenance expenses, working capital, debt service on bonds and other indebtedness, debt service reserve requirements, and then allowance for capital improvements, depreciation and extension. So that's the formula that we followed. We looked at your historical financial statements for the past three years and then developed a pro forma or projected revenue requirements for consideration. And then we met with the council initially in July, and then as late as even this morning, we were still massaging some of those numbers to bring back, basically. But we are proposing a three days rate increase or rate adjustment so that we can address some of these capital needs. Sounds like there may be some water one coming up too, but we're just focused on wastewater and stormwater tonight. The phase one, which we're proposing to take effect as practical, as soon as practical, about fifteen percent increase that would raise the average water bill, I'm sorry, average wastewater bill about seven dollars and fifty cents a month. Then we would have phase two kick in about the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-six, which would be an additional fifteen percent increase, and then in nine months later, in the middle of twenty twenty-seven, we'd graduate that up to an additional ten percent. So three different phases, two at fifteen, one at ten. And that would be applied to both stormwater and sanitary sewer. Stormwater's not a real big, big amount right now. It's only three dollars. You go up to like four dollars and forty-four cents for a typical household. And I know these projects are often create sticker shock, and I'm, but you're not alone. There's communities all over the state are facing the same thing, and I'm sure all over the country. You've got IDIM rules, and I know that this council is concerned about the public health and welfare of its citizens, both the water, wastewater and public safety and everything. Those are all, I think, kind of equal in priority. But even with these three rate adjustments, your rates are still gonna be very competitive with what we're seeing in other communities. Every community goes through stair steps. You know, you have a project and you have to make an adjustment. Then, you know, a few years go by, you got another project, have to make another adjustment. Right now, the adjustment we're looking at is really focused on the slip lining issue to keep infiltration and influ- out of the sanitary sewer system. That gives you more capacity for other growth down the road, so. That's the presentation. I know there's rate ordinance that will be introduced tonight. After the rate ordinance is introduced, we'll set a public hearing date. I think we kind of have that scheduled, is that right? November twentieth. November twentieth, we have a public hearing here, and it'll be a notice that'll be published in the newspaper. We have to mail written notice to the outside of city customers. That's kind of another, I guess they don't think people living outside the town need the newspaper, but we'll make sure that that happens as well. And with that.
Can you make sure that's published in the Center of Bolton and not in Elwood or Pounceon where we don't read that paper?
Okay, do you know which?
Anderson Herald.
Yeah. Anderson Herald.
Is that okay?
It better be. I'm moving down that road.
Any questions from the council at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to introduce Michelle Dana. She's been working on this project as well. I happen to be in, right nearby, thought I'd hop over to be here as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crone.
CDS engineers, Dan, let's talk about the water main replacements.
All right. Good evening, council. Dan Cutschall with CDS engineers. Listening to everyone, I just really have a lot of sympathy, and I live on a well. I have arsenic in my well. I drink bottled water, and so I understand your plight here. I've been an engineer in water and sewer for almost forty years, so if there's a solution to be had, I'll find it. You talked about bringing in experts. I have a lot of people on my team that are experts. I feel I'm an expert on water. And I have a lot of other resources that I can bring in as well, so find a solution. And one other thing I'll say is I'm very impressed by the, is it Ms. Davis? Very impressed by some of the research you guys have done and what you're doing, so that's really, really good. Just to talk a little bit about what you mentioned, the town does test for disinfection byproducts, which is TTHM, trihalo methane and HAA5, which is halo acidic acid. They do test for that. That is required by IDIM. I don't know what it is in new water, but it is well below the limits when they test it, so I've seen that. You will, you get a report every year on, it's called Consumer Confidence Report, that the water utility is required to send out every year. So you, you are under those, you're under all the maximum contaminant levels. They do not, they do test for iron. You do have iron that's high in the St. Row thirteen well. It's not as high in the Ford Road or Ford Street well. They, they do not test for manganese. It is not required. We are getting a test for manganese, and the reason we say we believe your water is high in iron and manganese, we know it's high in iron. In Indiana, it's always high in iron and manganese. Those two go together. And manganese was tested historically, probably when the wells were initially installed. I don't have those tests. I don't know what they were, but I'm hearing that they were high, but we're gonna get that test. Couple other things. The backflow, you had mentioned backflow. Somebody here has mentioned that. There is no, all water meters and water setters have backflow prevention. There is no possible back contamination on backflow from another source through a meter or through.
But they said the fire hydrants. They said, have you checked the fire hydrants and all the backflow on the fire hydrants?
Fire hydrants do not have backflow, so.
That's what they asked, and I know what they're asking. They're touching on that.
There's not a lot of people that are putting stuff in fire hydrants. I mean, if you are, that's, that's against the law. Anyway, there's no backflow in fire hydrants. So one of the things that we did, Brian asked, and just also to preface this, the town council has asked me to look at this, and we've been working together for on sewer issue for probably two years, on the water issue about three months. So we're getting into this, okay? The, we looked, Brian asked me to look at the water main, what it would take to replace all the water main in town that has not been replaced. that has not been replaced or that is fairly new. So just to give you some numbers, there's about 73,000 lineal feet of water main in Lapel. About 10,000 is relatively new, 10,000 feet. About 9,000 feet was replaced a couple of years ago in Commonwealth's project. And so that leaves about 54,000 feet that need to be replaced. Now, you have a lot of four and two inch water main. That is not very conducive to fire flow. So what we're recommending is that you do an eight inch loop in Lapel, two eight inch ladder runs through the middle of Lapel, the rest of it's six inch. I generally would recommend you do all eight inch, but magnitude of this project, I would not. And so to replace all that, 54,000 feet, it's $30.3 million. So that's, it's a big number. And your rates, we've not done a rate study, Corona hasn't looked at this, but I would guess that it's going to quadruple or triple your rates. So that's the big thing that the, somebody had asked about the cause, why are we getting brown water? What's the issue? So there's many factors. A lot of this pipe is old cast iron pipe. It's 60 to 80 years old. In cast iron pipe, you get scale. If you've ever seen an old cast iron pipe in your house, and I remember replacing a bunch of it in my house. Cast iron pipes like this, but with all the scale, it ends up being like this. So not only do you have flow and pressure issues, now you've got scale. And when that move, when the water moves, and I don't want to blame Rockaway either, but they were using an awful lot of water. When that moves faster than normal, you're going to break that scale off in the inside of that pipe and you're going to stir all that water all up. And that's what's causing the brown, more than likely causing the brown water. The other thing that's probably causing the brown water is the tank. We are in the process of cleaning the tank. I don't think it's been cleaned in a while. It's very common in communities that have high iron and manganese to have film or a sludge layer at the bottom of the tank. So all that's going to get cleaned out and that's in the process right now. I will say something about the wells. I think somebody asked about the wells. And Brian was correct. You have two wells. The Ford Street well was just recently cleaned. It was getting, the capacity of that well is 250 gallons a minute. We, after we cleaned it, we got a little more than that, which is good. So the well is clean. The wells are not your source of brown water. I'll tell you that right now. The, why we did this was a facet. Those, the Ford Street well was down to about 160 gallons a minute. It needs to be up to about 250 to 300. The Stairway 13 well, which is high in iron, is down to about 400. It's rated at 500. So that one's going to get cleaned more than likely in November. So if that was all the issues.
How much does that cost?
Cleaning the well? That was in last month's agenda and I think the Ford Street, they were both about 30,000.
Yeah, I was thinking around 30,000.
Somewhere in that each. And you said a tank, so you're talking to Water Tower?
Water Tower.
Those wells, I'd be cleaned about depending on the capacity and how well, how far they go down. Generally about once a year, once every other year. And the tank, I talked with Jenny about this today, actually. We're going to clean that tank and then a year from now, we're going to inspect it again to see if it needs cleaned again. Generally, tanks don't get cleaned more than three to five years. But given the situation here, I thought it was prudent to go ahead and inspect it after a year and look at it and make a determination of what we, how we go from there.
How many times have we cleaned it, cleaned the tank so far in the last?
I can't answer that. I don't.
Five to 10 years.
I don't think it's been cleaned since I've been on the council.
It hasn't since I started either.
And how long have you been on?
It was, last time it was cleaned was 2002.
So yeah, tank needs some.
Is this the part where I can ask my question?
Sure.
So, and I'm not a chemist, I'm not pretending to be, I'm not a hydrologist. I perhaps left in a holiday and I sleep. But I've noticed, I've noticed that our water coming out of the spigot is, you know, nothing.
At your house?
I have a bypass on my water software, so I'm talking about what's coming out of my spigot outside now. So it's just, it's kind of exposed from the meter. It's really, really high pH. And when Brandon came out to, to test my water that day for the brown nasty stuff coming out of the spigot, he said, I'm not even going to test this. It's high in iron. That's what's making it brown. And he said, the Stairway 13 well, for some reason, all of a sudden it's, it's high in iron. So I started doing some investigating, talking to some people. And they mentioned that when your water's really high in pH, that it will take water that is dissolved or take iron that is dissolved in water that you can't see and cause it to become iron you can see and will discolor your water. So I started questioning why this would be something that would be happening all of a sudden. Because I know you're saying the well is not the source of the issue and understand this is part of our frustration. We're getting mixed messages. One thing that can cause pH to rise in water is when a concrete plant makes a mess and discharges where they shouldn't and our wells are not very deep and they're not very far from a temporary concrete plant out there. Has anybody been out there to the site, kind of looked around, see what's going on? Like, I'm not accusing anybody. I'm just asking, like, kind of made me wonder.
Went out, Stairway 13?
Yeah.
You know, that's a good question. It may be worth us looking into if the pH is also high at Citizens Treatment Plant. They have wells out there too. In fact, I just talked to one of the guys at Citizens yesterday about this. And we're going to start sharing some information back and forth on that. So you know what the pH was at your house?
Well, my strip taps out at 9.6.
Oh, it's higher than 9.6?
So it's at least 9.6.
Okay. I can look into that.
And I think it said that can happen at any point over seven. And the reason I asked was because I didn't know of a treatment in that area.
Your treatment doesn't affect pH. Your treatment is basically an iron manganese filter. It's a gravity filter. It has aeration at the top and it gravity's down. And then there's a holding tank and it gets pumped into the, to the tower. So the treatment, we don't add chemicals to change the pH at the treatment. So it's not, it's not that. It would be naturally occurring. But I'll look into that. So is the 13, Stairway 13 well the same as the Citizens 13? No, it's not the same, but it's in the same area. Okay, so there's two separate locations from the well. Two separate locations.
From here to Parkview, you can see them.
Yeah. It's just split, I assume? I'm sorry, one goes to Ingalls and one starts going towards Lapel then?
It doesn't go to Ingalls.
It goes.
It goes to Jefferson Place, excuse me. It goes to Jefferson Place. You know where that is in Benelton? And it goes down towards 136th Street and Perry Bragg's Road. It's a lot of those new additions down there.
We have an abandoned well that's closer to that concrete plant, if I'm not mistaken.
It was a test well. Just a test well. We don't use it.
No, I know, but does it reach the same aquifer?
Yes.
So potentially if it was experiencing some kind of contamination, it could potentially contaminate the aquifer generally?
Normally, the delineation field for the, for that aquifer runs to the southwest. In other words, it runs away from our well. So if there was some contamination south, it would keep going south. Normally. I'm not saying that couldn't happen, but that's normal.
Is that impacted by the drought?
Yes.
Dan's got his stinking hat on over there.
No, it's, it's good information and questions. That's a good question.
That may be one of the things we start testing too, is every once in a while, test the pH at our plant.
I, I think Brandon does.
Does he?
Pretty sure he's testing. I know we tested the wastewater treatment plant.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong. I like when they all say that. Correct me if I'm, oh, wait a minute. So you can all hear. They have added, Citizens Energy Group has added a lot of customers onto those three wells that they have down there that are, as Chad said, about 100, 100 yards, 150 yards from our well. I'm not so sure with adding all those customers and they're using a lot more water now, that they are stirring up that aquifer a little bit more than what we were before. Because when we first started using that well, the only place they went was Jefferson Place.
Now, when they cleaned, like they did the Ford Street well, they inspected beyond just the clean to see what the water levels and things like that are correct?
We videotaped it.
So we'll do the same thing down there?
We will. So it was inspected. That is a rock well. And it was cleaned and, you know, there's a screen down there. It's very, very sound. It has very, very small openings. And the screens at times will get little aggregate and sand particles in it and that causes the well to reduce in capacity.
It also lines up just like your spigot does. When you got the screens on there, that screen in the bottom of that well will line up just like that.
The pictures that showed us, I mean, Brian was out there, the pictures were, there's a lot of iron on those pieces of steel casing and the screen and all kinds of things. So it's pretty clean now.
In the last meeting, you said that you were going to look when you maintain the Ford Street well to see if it could, it could be brought up to 500 gallon per minute capacity as opposed to drilling another well?
Yep.
What was the outcome of that?
The outcome was the aquifer didn't, didn't support going any higher. We can go up to maybe 300 gallons a minute, which is I think about where we're at now, just under that. That's the max. That well, we'll see. We did try to get that a little higher and it just won't do.
There was a very risky process. We could have tried to get more water out of that well. But if it went wrong, it basically was going to collapse the well. We elected to not do that.
That well's been there a long time. That was one of the original wells.
Gary used to pull water out of it with a bucket. There you go, Gary.
Do we need to look at trying to find a new location for?
We are. We're in that process, definitely.
We are in that process. At the last council meeting, I brought a new well, potential price of about 400,000. But we're going to look at some other areas, but yeah.
And everything around us has iron. We're good.
Not going to get away from it. Not getting away from it. And actually, this county has got traditionally, north central Indiana is traditionally poor in groundwater. And you will find iron manganese all over Indiana. But it, the groundwater quantity is poor in this area and really you're all the way across into Boone County as well. And a little bit into Hamilton. Yeah, I'm just kind of stuck.
And any well in our conversation from the inspecting and getting information on the well cleaning, anything we, if we find a well that's, can produce 500 gallons a minute and it's three miles away, it's a million dollars a mile for the supply line.
Tell them how much a, just a test well costs. Just if we think there's going to be water in that place and we want to do a test well, tell them how much it costs.
Probably looking at 50 to 100,000 dollars. And that's just to find out if that area's got the fire flow.
Can we use redevelopment funds for that?
Do we have like a ballpark figure of what Rockaway last uses daily?
It varies daily and it's very, it's went up in the last three months. You have an idea. I don't have exactly.
We estimated the last three, over the last three months, they averaged 72,000 gallons a day.
What percentage of that, if you had to guess, is our water going there out of our well?
That's what they're.
That's what it is, yes.
That's ours.
So since they went and talked with them, I think it's dropped. Some days have been 20,000, some 40,000. We had one high day of 80,000 and they said they took care of the problem, so.
Probably a third or fourth of your water supply wash on daily. Your water supply is higher than that, but that's what you use.
Where are they discharging to? If they're using millions of gallons of water, where's, where's it going?
Sewer?
In the sewer? In our wastewater that's at capacity that?
Yeah. Probably some in the area.
Lot of steam.
What kind of grants are we looking at for this?
Well, 30 million dollars is a lot of money. Grants, I would probably give you a different answer five years ago.
Right.
Buzz could probably get up here and tell you about grants too, but SRF grants have really dried up. USDA, which is a federal grant program, it's more of a loan program now.
Right.
Not a lot of grants there either. OCRE will give you a $750,000 grant, which doesn't do a whole lot if you're spending 30 million dollars.
If our concern is, if they found out that Rockaway was a concern, CIRDA, C-I-R-D-A, has a $1 million grant and Madison County is up for applying for that. You have until October 31st to submit a letter to ask them to consider Madison County. And it's to reduce emissions. And if we're worried about emissions from Rockaway, maybe it would help with our water situation.
Do we have a grant writer?
Brandon, I don't know if he's.
Yes, you have a grant writer. Michael Klein-Peter. One thing that interested me in what you mentioned was the EPA Superfund site. I was involved in a project in Ohio. Probably 20, 25 years ago that had a plume from a dry cleaning. And they paid, EPA Superfund paid for the entire water system to be replaced and built a brand new water plant.
Yes.
Zero cost, zero repair. So that interested me.
They embrace the community and it really helps them financially.
Yeah, I think we ought to look into that.
There, when I mentioned, I had reported the black smoke coming out of the stacks. I think it was Jennifer Ly. I reported it to IDIM and they had said, you know, like they have a new policy now, like they can't use photos because it's AI. It could be AI. They gave me a direct number to call, so I could call like directly if I saw it again. So I did and like they said they've been out there, but they're, they're left to monitor themselves. Kind of like, have you ever seen the movie Dark Waters with Mark Russell in it? DePonte was left to monitor themselves. I asked them how to ensure that they are monitoring correctly and reporting like the truth. They told me that they have a five year, kind of like investigation, like every five years they come and check on Superfund sites that used to be Superfund sites, if they're still running or in large state overseen. Then that five year investigation will tell them if their reports have been telling them the truth. The last one they had was in 2022, so we have until what, 2027? The last one they had was in 2022, so we have until what, 2027 until we find out? Um, again, if they've been monitoring correctly and if we're having all these issues, like I said, the employee said that they believe that they were grandfathered in for the pollution. When they start doing upgrades on their tanks, which they admitted to doing, they are no longer grandfathered in. So they're permitted to discharge so much organic matter. I don't know if they've had those updated since they've had their updates done. Um, so I, I, I can't get anything from Item, I've done like records requests, they've, one of the Item people hung up on me on the phone today, like it's, you know, I mean, I've tried to get the documentation, but again, like if we have the backing of the town to kinda like try to get those, we could figure it out probably. Um, and again, if they are the issue, the super fund program would, they would reclassify it as an, as an active super fund site and they would take care of it. Cause then they're not, they will not charge the people to take care of that. The dump, the town dump, they found that the town was responsible for causing that kind of contamination and they still funded the cleanup of it because they cannot charge the taxpayers. I mean, it's an option, it's, it's a little bit of relief for us if, if they are causing an issue.
Well, I know, um, your grant writer's listening, uh, cause he texted me about 20, 30 minutes ago. And, uh, so I'll talk to him in the morning. I really think ma- maybe there's an opportunity to get this super fund with EPA.
Right, or. And I don't, I have.
Well, that one's a million.
Yeah, this one is a million.
At a larger scale.
Yeah, but super fund, that doesn't go away if they find out they're, they still have the program.
But we've got deadlines, we're trying to meet.
So this one is a, is it a federal or a state?
It is, uh, the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program. So it says, Central Indiana is planning for a more sustainable future by adopting strategies that.
And see, every council member should be writing this down, should be taking notes and looking this up.
I emailed this to Brandon, so Brandon has a copy of it.
I'm gonna give you my email after the meeting, if you could email that.
Okay, sure. Um, I don't really know, I don't think it tells me if it's Indiana State Oil Service compromising municipalities.
So it's Indian, sounds like it's an Indiana program. I was gonna say that the federal program, good luck trying to get hold of it.
Right. But yeah, this one, it's, the county said, it says it's eligible is Boone, Brown, Hamilton, Hancock, Hendricks, Johnson, Madison, Marion, Morgan and Putnam, until we have until 31st to send letters, ask them. So.
And that's the thing, if people are not. People need to be on a job. There's no other way to say that, you guys, there's a lot of money at stake.
Anybody else have any other questions? Can we do multiple grants?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And also, what's left over that's not come to the grants? Can you do a bond, a zero interest bond to the state and break it over 30 or 40 years?
Can't do zero interest, uh, those are gone away, that used to be SRF, uh, and those are very select and few. We, we worked with a couple of communities, actually I worked with Crown on, um, one in Nashville, they got a 0% bond. Those are gone. Um, probably looking at market rate bonds, which are about 5%.
They're 20 year bonds, correct?
20, 25, 25.
The regular program is 20 year bonds, but then they have a pool program that's closer to a market rate that you can get up to 30, maybe even 35 years on that. Which, you know, for replacing water mains, that's not a bad match, cause useful life of a new water main, hopefully is 100 years, you know, uh, but, but, um, so I've usually found that there's a pretty good savings and, you know, in terms of the rate impact going from a 20 year to a 25 and even to a 30, but when you go out 35 and 40, it doesn't really save you all that much more and then, you know, you're paying on that forever, but, uh, but SRF does have a pool program that, that could go out and, you know, 30 years might, but 33 million is still a lot.
I think you can go, uh, can you go out to 35?
Yeah. Yes, well, in the regular program, yeah, but, uh, in the pool program, you can do it for anything, but, but since this is primarily pipe, it would fit in either one, but.
Want to use your information?
And honestly, we got this stuff going and stuff, the stuff's under warranty for a hundred years too, as far as the pipes and things.
Uh, you got an extended warranty from Atlas, wouldn't it like three years?
I believe so.
The fifth street is five, but, but the main part is three, like Brian said.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. I'm gonna get through these. E ordinances. See what else on here. Hi, Lauren. Okay, ordinance 2025 wastewater ordinance first read. This is an ordinance to establish a revised schedule of wastewater rates and charges for the town of LaPelle municipal wastewater. This is presentation about the, the rate changes for the wastewater. There will be a public hearing.
November 20th.
November 20th. Ordinance 2025 dash 06. Cause I gotta vote to introduce it.
Motion under consent.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is that you, Chad?
That was me, yes, ma'am.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Uh, ordinance 2025 dash 06, it's a limb ordinance, first read. This basically, oh here, I'll read the ordinance. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of LaPelle, Indiana, establishing regulations for the collection of tree limbs and branches. We've kind of had an abuse of the tree limb pickup. This will maximum allowable size is a three by three by three, nothing larger than four inches. Uh, anybody have any questions? Yeah, it's just first read. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance 2025 dash 06.
I'll make it second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025 dash 07, this is a drainage ordinance, also a first read. An ordinance of the Town of, the Town Council of the Town of LaPelle, Indiana, acting as the Board of Public Works and Safety, adopting the Madison County Drainage Ordinance as the Town of LaPelle Stormwater Control Ordinance. It just means the county is over our stormwater. They follow their directions on the stormwater.
That's correct, it's, uh, you have, in your ordinance, it says you have a, um, a stormwater management department. And, uh, that's operated by the Board of Works, which is also you now. As the town matures and grows, those can be spread out into separate boards, as of right now, it's the U5. And, uh, this is, Madison County has done a lot of work on their drainage ordinance, tightening it up. Um, as you know, we live on, this area used to be mostly swamp. And thanks to our, our forefathers, we put in a lot of grains and things like that to make it so we could live here. Um, it's, that's really become a thing with all the development we have, the incurious surface, it's a problem countywide. Um, the Madison County Surveyor, Ken Kozensky, recommended, uh, to us that we put, we adopt Madison County's ordinance so we can just say, hey, any developers, whatever the county's using, we are, we're all on the same team, the drains all go in and out, there's no urban drains here in LaPelle, all of them go at least, or at least the regulated drains go outside of town. And so this is a, in my opinion, it's a very good way to, for, I hate the term synergy.
One easy set of rules to follow.
Correct. Easy for developers, easy for towns, municipalities. But the, the, your ordinance that you're introducing tonight does state that if at any time you want to make a restriction more strict, a standard more strict, that would govern over the counties. And so, and with any ordinance, you can always change it, but if there's ever a time where you think the county is too loosey goosey on a standard, the town has the every option that's specifically written in there, that, uh, you can, you can make it tighter.
I will entertain a motion for ordinance 2025 dash 07.
Motion to introduce ordinance 2025 dash 07.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025 dash 08, right of way permit fee first read. An ordinance of the Town of LaPelle, Madison County, Indiana, establishing a right of way activity permit and standards for street repair. This essentially means that anybody who wants to put anything in the right of way has to get a permit, they have standards they have to adhere to and they have to fix what they care of.
So if I have a drain line going under a road and I have to have it cut up to fix it, there's a standard that I just can't fill, grab and be done?
That is right.
Yes.
And do you have to apply for a special permit before that happens?
Yes. Sorry.
Hoping that I don't.
Just, just curious.
Entertained a motion for ordinance 2025 dash eight, first read.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Move on to resolution 2025 dash 06, a lien procedure. This is, that's not.
That number is wrong.
That number is, yes, must be 09. We already had 06.
This is a resolution.
I'm sorry, Chad.
Nope, I, I got it wrong too.
I'm sorry.
This, this is a procedure that, more of a guidance for, for our town officials on when to place a lien on unpaid utilities. Um, and a way to record liens, can be recorded with the county and then they become eligible for, if one of the properties come up on tax sale, if the taxes are paid, uh, well, let me back up. If, if these, uh, if your utility fees, your sewer fees are not paid, this is lays out the procedure by which those can be certified to the Madison County Auditor. Those fees, they've come up on their tax duplicate that goes out to the people that pay them. If they still don't pay them, it goes up for tax sale. I've, I've actually seen properties get sold on tax sale because of a, a drainage assessment or a, or, and sewer liens are uh, one of those things, but this is a roadmap to do, you have the stack shortage right to file these things on, but this gives you a definite procedure and it's also, it's just guidance for, for you guys and the, and the, and future town officials to, to follow. Um, it, it mirrors state law.
Is this a three vote?
Resolutions are not. You can, you can pass this time if you wanted to by, uh, simple majority.
So I'll entertain a motion to pass resolution 2025 dash 06.
I'll make the motion to pass resolution 2025 06 on lien procedures.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
I'm a little hesitant on this one. I'm gonna mess this word up.
You want me to try it?
Cesquicentennial.
LaPelle's? The celebration, sesquentennial celebration.
That are 150 years.
Right?
Correct.
There we go.
So I spoke with, um, Shelley Sears from the, um, I'll see you, thank you. My mic's going. Um, from LaPelle Community Association, they are wanting to incorporate something into the village fair that has to do with our 150 years. They asked, would any of you on the council be interested in maybe lia- liaisoning to the LaPelle Community Association to be a part of, they don't want to leave us out or leave you guys out if you want to be involved in it. I guess is the best way, but.
Well, Gary, you were here when they planted it, so.
I think he waited all day for that.
All day.
He stayed up for that, didn't he?
So I'm just bringing it up, if one of you would like to see me or two of you would like to see me, see me to be involved, then I can get you in contact with Shelley.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the Atlas retainage release.
That's why I learned how to say the word.
Riley, you wanna go through this one? Have they, uh, done everything they were required to do?
Yes.
For their contract.
So they have, uh, previously.
No, this is not open for discussion.
No, it's he, so we can hear him.
Oh.
It is an open meeting.
Thank you.
So, uh, one of the previous meetings, we have already approved their dedication or file payments. Uh, the rescue account manager needs a signed document, uh, allowing release of that retainage. So this is just a formal document so that they can actually procure it. Um, they're not allowed to do that until they get a signed document from the town and your authorized signature, which would be Brian in this case. So it's just last page of documents to close it.
We don't need to vote on this since we've already voted on it?
Uh, I would say we should still vote on it.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Um, I'll make a motion to release Atlas's retainage.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Do you want to take this with you tonight, Riley?
No.
I just emailed it to, straight to Atlas, she said, is that correct?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. Development agreement Comcast, did we ever get, Jenny, did we ever get a response from Comcast?
Not yet.
Okay.
We sent them a draft and we're awaiting a response.
Okay, we, I need to folks table this, we will table that. Ordinance 2025 dash 04, budget ordinance adoption. This is just adopting our budget. Anyone have any questions for that one? Okay. I'll make the motion to adopt, uh, ordinance 2025 dash 04, our budget ordinance.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Uh, the gas cell ordinance is a second read, isn't it?
It's a last read, only it's two, correct, Dan?
Yes.
Only it's two.
Ordinance 2025 dash 03, the gas cell ordinance, this is the second read. Anyone have any questions? Okay. I'll make the motion. Uh, to accept ordinance 2025 dash 03, gas cell ordinance. Second read. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Moving on, we have no public hearings tonight. Department reports. Please.
Hi, I'll be quick, this is, uh, this is a long meeting. I've been giving you our updates, uh, big mistake personnel, obviously we have Connor, uh, Officer Jackson still at the academy. Uh, we hired Officer Lee to fill our vacant spot. Um, Reserve Officer Foster resigned due to conflict, he obtained a new job, um, and he just doesn't have time to do this anymore. So he's resigned. The Bravo, um, just got word today that it is built, that they're having some electronic issues. It's going tomorrow for diagnostic. And then it should be done hopefully tomorrow. If they can't get a couple codes, it's late. We submitted to insurance, I'm still working with them, um, all the information for the, I call it the replacement vehicle, which would be first vehicle. So they've got that, as soon as that's done, we've already talked, um, a lot of the other equipment was warranted out by, by wheeling. So we don't have to spend as much on lights as we originally had thought because wheeling's going to replace them. So we saved some money there, um, it's been a slow, slow month for us all, but it's been a quick timeframe between council meetings. We had a early, early meetings this month. But we slowed down, we only had three hundred and twenty-four calls and we only filed three criminal charges this month. Um, compared to what, I think we had sixteen last month, something like that, so. People are slowing down, everything is there. As far as our numbers, uh, same thing that I always give you just reflection of what I just went through. We did get delivery date for the new vest, they are estimated to be here November eleventh. I know it's been what we've been talking about. Um, I will work at my council liaison. We're trying to find what we can, where we can, and then whatever we need, then I can approach council for that additional which we've originally brought out, um, which would just be additional preparation for parts continuing yet. But at this point, we'll try to work it out on our current budget. Any questions for me?
When do I need to bring up the emergency order please?
You could vote now to extend it. We've issued it, correct?
Yes.
So, um, the, the council as a whole can take the emergency declaration and extend it um, until which time, uh, the payments are made. Otherwise, you, the, you could renew it as the town council president, as the executive. I recommend this is.
That's not, that's not the emergency.
Okay, this one's not?
No. I was gonna talk about that one just a moment.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on. I don't have anything.
Uh, so the, the crossroads proposal that you have in front of you, that's the one that, uh, I sought permission to, uh, to get that quote for pricing, uh, at the last meeting. We paid off, uh, vehicle twenty twenty dash two back in January. Not knowing, uh, how the budget situation was going to work out, we were purposely waiting to replace that vehicle uh, until we knew, uh, what was in the budget and what funds were available. Uh, the budget that we just passed does include the funding for this vehicle in it. Uh, we have an opportunity to purchase a twenty twenty four vehicle that is ten thousand dollars less than a twenty twenty five vehicle. Uh, and that is represented in the pricing, uh, that was sent out to everybody with the rest of the documents. So we have two options on the financing for that, uh, one would be to finance the full amount. Uh, option two would be to use the available funds, uh, that are in our vehicle replacement fund that comes from the sale of old vehicles. Uh, so option one will be five years, uh, for an annual payment of fourteen thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and twelve cents. And option two would be five years, uh, for a payment, annual payment of twelve thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
And on this one, here the twelve thousand dollars.
That's, we're, we would take eighty-five hundred dollars, I believe, as well as, yeah. Yeah, so we basically buy down the payment.
Right, I just wanted to make that one same thing.
Yep. So again, this is the normal rotation vehicle, we've put it off for a year until we knew it was going off of the budget. It is accounted for in the budget that we just voted to approve.
Uh, the eighty-five hundred dollars, does any of that potentially need or should go to the
It is.
replacement of the vehicle that was totaled?
Uh, we are using half of that fund for the vehicle that was totaled and the other half is being used on this.
I will entertain a motion to purchase the twenty twenty four Ford F- one fifty police responder.
Option two?
Yes.
That would.
Option two, yes.
Second.
Did you make the motion, Brian?
No.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Okay, planning. Planning, didn't have anything last month, we had a quorum, we met, there was nothing to discuss. Oh, utilities, Brandon is not here. Um, did anyone? Is there anything?
I think the only thing he had was the signs.
Yeah, we're getting, we're gonna get some new street signs. So people can see where they're going. Uh, some of ours are very old, as you know, so we're getting a replacement plan, he's gonna do some this month and, or next month and some the month after. Uh, we're also looking into upgrading the four-way stop at three hundred South and Old State Road one thirty-two. Uh, as you all know, there's gonna be a roundabout coming in supposedly next year. That's gonna increase that traffic out there and we need to upgrade that. So that's the two things that we're looking to for that, for utilities. And of course, we're still working on all of our problems.
Uh, Parks.
Good, I just need to add something to that. Um, they are starting smoke testing next Tuesday. Sorry, I took it out of line, but I didn't want to forget. Next Tuesday, they're gonna start smoke testing. Uh, Dan sent me a flyer thing, I'm gonna get some copies made of it. Do they need to go on the door of everybody's houses?
Yes.
Before Tuesday?
Yes. Do you mind if I say something?
So I'll take, go right ahead.
Okay. Police and fire, you're gonna need to be involved in this too. Uh, so smoke testing starts on Tuesday and what we're trying to determine is illegal connections into the sanitary sewer. Uh, if we find them, hopefully it'll save us from having to spend a lot more money and waste for it. So that starts Tuesday. If you have drains in your house, your basement or anywhere, pour a gallon of water in it. If you don't, the smoke will find it and it'll be inside your house. The smoke is not toxic, it's liquid smoke. Um, there's stuff on this, uh, flyer that Teresa has that talks about it, but, uh, it's not toxic, but, uh, you don't want to sit in it. Um, if you get it in your house, open the windows, turn on a fan, it'll go away pretty quickly. But make sure that you got water in your drains, all of them, your traps.
Teresa, what is that story?
Tuesday. It'll last about, mm, one and a half, two weeks, hang on, quickly they go. And they're gonna do the whole time.
I was just gonna ask, you mentioned that she has a flyer or something, i- is there, again, a way that we can get that out to the public to where everybody's not freaking out calling you going, my house is burning down?
No, I, that's what you said, I've gotta put them on every doorknob in town. Between now and then.
So we have to walk.
That's why I said I'll take volunteers, that's why I ordered it to you, I'll take volunteers.
Okay, so.
I'm just, she was staring right at you.
I'm trying to stare at Christie too, but she's not catching.
It is also just for people that are hooked to the sewer. I- if you're outside of the sewer area, you will not be affected by the smoke test.
Okay, so since we have to walk that and do that, can we also go ahead and print out flyers of steps A, B, and C to take for the water reporting? And then we can pass both out at the same time?
We can do that.
Sweet, let me know, get a hold of it.
Okay.
And we're happy to hang it at the doctor's office and the dental practice both.
Yeah.
I mean, those are high frequent places.
Yeah.
And the post office.
Yeah.
Can we run banners on Facebook, on your Facebook, on the town's Facebook, like banners when you have special things like this? I think you can.
Yeah, I think so. I can help you.
Yeah, I think you can run banners.
Yeah, the IT guy can.
I can make the banner.
That's what I'm saying. Can we make a banner or post a list?
Well, that's why I include a schedule of streets since it's gonna last two weeks.
Yeah, you got a map of who that is and who that is.
It's everywhere. Uh, we don't have a, uh, specific area they're gonna start, uh, I can ask them to get that. Uh, they're gonna do it systematically, so they'll start in one corner and go up as quickly as they can. So it's hard to put a schedule together because they may get, you may not find a lot of things. And if they don't, they're gonna go a lot faster. And if they find a lot of things, it's gonna be a lot slower. So it's hard to put a schedule together on something like that, but they are gonna start in one corner and work their way one direction.
But can you show like where they're hit, not while they're hitting it, but everywhere that's gonna be touched by it? Because some people don't know.
The whole town, including, uh, Fisherburg. I mean, the whole town.
Anybody that's stuck to the sewer.
Anybody that's stuck to the sewer system.
How far south on thirteen does that go?
It just goes to Brookside, Shiloh and two and Montgomery Farms.
Oh.
We don't have anything in thirteen.
Oh, we're gonna have new moves in. Anybody have any golf carts? You're welcome to ours. I'll keep, I'll keep you posted. Let me know, Teresa.
We're really looking for anything that is stormwater related, that is never been caught, that is in dumping into the sanitary.
Like down.
Have a huge amount of M4O every time you rain.
Like downspouts.
Right.
Subpumps.
That'd be a, street drain that's been missed over the years.
Catch basin.
Yeah, dumping into the sanitary.
Well, so, well, like if there's an abandoned sewer line somewhere.
Exactly.
Will it come, will it, will a smoke test come up through asphalt or?
I don't know, it'll come up through a yard, it'll come up, uh, you'll see, uh, yard drains, downspouts. You're not gonna probably find anything going through the asphalt.
Okay.
Like, you know, on.
Could be rare, could be a crack in asphalt, yeah.
I've had Jesus down at my, uh, waters pond because I need one.
Uh, Parks King is not here either.
The only guy I have, Brian, she sent me, they moved the meeting for November to the thirteenth at seven following and the December eleventh meeting at seven is the two dates, they've moved two following planning because of the holidays and I think we would have fell on Thanksgiving for November.
You're still needing, Parks still needs.
School boarders. Supposedly Jake was gonna reach out to Blaine, who's on school board, because that's the one we really need to fill.
Okay.
I think that's the only one, I don't know about the other position.
Uh, Chad, what are you see?
Uh, we do not have a quorum tonight since everybody's on fall break, so we don't need this one.
And you still need a member?
We still need a member, we still need clarification from legal on who appointed the person that left so that we can get the correct body to appoint.
Who was that commission left, Jim?
Uh, Nate McKinnon?
Yes, there he is, thank you.
Why are you searching for now?
Okay.
Oh, Brian, sorry, Katie just said that that seat has been filled, other seat, there's, so they've all been filled.
Yeah, so Parks is full.
Yep.
Very good though.
Who resigned from this?
Nobody.
Oh.
It was a passing.
Oh.
Administration. Teresa. Administration.
I'm not administration.
She's the new, she's new, she's new, she probably doesn't have much. And by the way, this is Ms. Reske, Jennifer Reske. She is our new town administrator. She's been working with us a month now.
Two months.
Two, two months.
I know, right?
Time flies when you're having fun.
Well, I, this is my first meeting, I didn't prepare a report, but I've learned more about water in the past eight weeks than I ever thought I would know. I appreciate all the information that was shared tonight. Um, my, my directive from the council is to look at any and all options on fixing the problem. I've been really impressed by the, the care and concern with which they conduct their work. And I look forward to working with all of you as we find solutions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, what's trigger?
Okay. Uh, you can go first with the tr- I'll let you talk about the trick-or-treat in hours.
Okay, uh, initially, we had planned on trick-or-treating on Friday, October thirty-first. I have had multiple people bring up that is football section. So, this is.
Is that, is that here by the way?
Uh, it's probably gonna, I know the first one is in Winchester, I don't know where the second one is at. It most likely from what I did hear was probably Greenfield. And, uh, hang, what is it?
I know what you mean, Eastern Hancock.
Eastern Hancock. Close to Greenfield. So, I guess we need to have discussion if we want to keep it on the thirty-first, we want to move it to Thursday, we want it to Saturday.
If we add Saturday.
Well, that, that's kind of where I'm at because we will be.
Do both.
We will be at the football game on Friday, I mean.
There's, this kid's pretty careless. Thursday, we're gonna be getting candy. We're one candy.
The only thing I have to say is we, we changed it one year. Um, and at least from my department, that was bad. Because you, we have to remember that probably thirty-five percent of the people that come are coming from out of town. So if we do change it on Friday, we're probably still going to have in, in what's a huge number of people that are gonna come. Um, my personal opinion is Halloween's Halloween. We, we changed it before and it, you can't make everybody, and I'm not saying this in a bad way, but you can't make everybody happy. Because now, you know, we changed it, which obviously, it's our town, it's our, our kids going, we want, we want to support our kids, whether that be a home game or not, and I thought the drawing was tonight or tomorrow, but I'm not positive.
They're going to Winchester.
Okay.
First.
I second that one. How's that gonna go?
Uh, that's my only concern, I mean, honestly.
Having a discussion about it.
Yeah, you have, but I, my experience was, I was here chief of year, I think, and I made that decision and that was one of those ones, I'm like, I'm, I won't make that decision again. So if the council decides that, but just keep that in mind that if, if we do change it, the town's still gonna be flooded Friday night because the people aren't gonna know. So, you know, it's one of those, it's a tough call, what do you do? But if we do, if we do change it, just know that we're gonna have Halloween twice and not just once.
And Winchester's a haul.
Yeah.
So a lot of people will make that trip.
So.
Uh, you'd be surprised.
No, I mean, they will, but there's, it's still a haul.
Just do both then.
I, as, that's my, my only input is, is ask experience. And if we do change it, which I'm not saying I'm opposed to that, I'm saying that just realize that we're going to have Halloween in town twice. So, you know, I'll pull a couple additional officers in, try to get as many reserves as I can, um, obviously because that saves us money. But I'll have to bring one, one extra guy in on Halloween, just.
For the extra people.
For, for the extra people, yeah.
I'm here to make a motion that we add Saturday, November first, as additional Halloween trick-or-treating hours. And we add that to the doorknocker flyers. So the nice thing is on Saturday, there would only be townwide trick-or-treating most likely. I was gonna add a ticket.
It's gonna go on Facebook.
Uh, I will second that. Two nights.
Five to eight.
Yes, five days.
I guess we're gonna get trick-or-treaters then.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, second up, um, don't forget the A- conferences next week, I will be out of the office Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And I also handed you guys out, or sent you guys out a voice quote.
And I also handed you guys out, or sent you guys out a voice quote. My computer's so old that the something ran, runs out the 31st of this month. My computer is the only one that handles the Neptune meter reading thing that we have now, the program we have now. So, um, I guess Neptune, or whoever Neptune reached out to Voice and got me a quote for changing the file format so that, uh, we can actually put it like on Diane's computer and mine. And then it, it reads totally different.
Ultimately, this is the upgrade that, because Neptune was not compatible with Windows 11. This will make it compatible with Windows 11 so we can upgrade your computer.
Yes, and it will, it also had a lot of other features where it will like, we can do real time on a lot of our newer meters too, so.
I would make a motion to approve the invoice from Voice for $1,195 for the update.
Oh, sorry.
Brian?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
And I have one more thing. Um, I know this probably has to go on the, it'll have to be something added to, I think the salary ordinance, Chad, if I'm not mistaken, but Lisa took her Pazer class and passed it, her and, um, Jenny both did and passed it. She would, I didn't know if there was a raise for that. Because it's a.
It's not currently one of the listed licenses, but we could add it because that will save us a fortune. So, uh, I know next month is salary ordinance month discussion, so we'll, uh, add that to the list.
That's all I have.
If anybody wants to know what that is, that's basically how, they've taken classes to learn how to rate our roads for grants. Anything to do with grants, you have to have this study, so, which usually.
We made $20,000 last time.
Yes. It's a lot of those. They're expensive to get our roads rated. And now I have two people in town hall that can do it.
I just have one other quick question for Teresa. Since you're going to be out of office next Tuesday through Thursday and smoke testing starting Tuesday, can we get a date and time ironed out that we can start doing these door hangers?
That'll have to be put out before Monday. So I'm, it's going to be this weekend, like.
In the storm.
Well, you guys, you were, oh, you know.
I don't care. I mean, I'm out in it. I like it.
You can probably get them ready tomorrow.
I'll get them ready tomorrow and then we'll come up with a plan as to when we can.
You help out?
When we can get them out.
I'm going. I'm out of here.
I'm going to remember all the things I've got to put on the door hanger.
All right. Everything, Teresa?
Yeah, that's everything for me.
Okay, approval of minutes. August 21st, 2025, regular meeting and September 2nd, 2025, special meeting. Anyone have any questions about those minutes concerns? I will make a motion to accept the minutes for August 21st, 2025, and September 2nd, 2025. Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Approval of allowance dockets, September. Open up, let's get the claims. Approval of claims. Motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second. Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Epstein?
Approval of the allowance dockets. It's just a repeat of some of what's on the claims.
I'm making a motion to approve allowance dockets.
I'll second.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Council members comments and concerns. Anyone? Okay, our next regular meeting will be Thursday, November 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, right here at the Lions Club. Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.